Okay.
Uh, so are there any revisions? I think we only have the one agenda item.
Just one.
So do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call Eric.
Aye.
Steven.
Aye.
Marion. Hi, she said aye. Paul.
Aye.
Okay, and so I do declare that it's necessary to handle this in the executive session because it's related to potential non bargaining employee agreement. So I do move that we move to executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Eric.
Aye.
Steven.
Aye.
Marion.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And I am I as well, and I just. Open session of the select board on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. And I'd like to ask Assistant Town Administrator to please read the open session agenda.
Uh, good evening. So after I read the agenda tonight, the select board can decide to approve it as presented, or amend the agenda, and I have not had anybody come forward looking for a public comment tonight. Items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated forty-eight hours in advance may be added. We have a seven P M. Public tax classification hearing with Wendy Elassy, the assessor. Item number two is a consideration of a bond anticipation art for Woodhaven Elder Housing and Town Buildings. Heidi Doyle is here to present that. Item number three is the consideration of acceptance of a resignation of the town collector effective November twentieth, twenty twenty-three for Pam Douse. Item number four is the consideration of appointment of interim town treasurer effective November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, Pam Douse. Item number five is a consideration of acceptance of various grants from the police chief, Thomas Galvin. He has a municipal bond safety grant in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-three cents, a DOJ supporting law enforcement agencies and seeking accreditation in amount of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, a B J A F Y twenty-three body worn camera policy and implementation program for forty thousand dollars, and a Commonwealth of Mass F Y twenty-two forty-four body worn camera program for seventy-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Item number six is the Sherburne three hundred and fiftieth celebration update. Mary Moore will be present to give a presentation. Item number seven is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant draft minutes. And I've plugged in the next meeting date, which is December seventh, December fourteenth, and December twenty-eighth. And I've attached the select board's meeting calendar. And item number eight is the consideration of routine business, select board reports, and town administrator reports.
Okay, one, we may find, I don't have the number, but the item five, the various grants for the police department, I believe he has another one to add to it, but I don't know.
He does. I asked if he wanted to add it, so he said he would thought he would wait to the next meeting.
All right, that's fine. So so we're good with that. So do I have any other revision, any revisions to the agenda? Harry Nun, does someone want to move the acceptance of the agenda?
Move the approval.
Second?
Second.
All right, Eric?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well. So we're now going to do the first one, which is the public tax classification hearing. And I'm going to read the announcement for that. The Sherburne Select Board will hold a virtual public annual tax classification hearing via Zoom on Thursday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. To discuss whether all five classes of property, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal, shall be taxed at the same rate or at a different rate for fiscal year twenty-four. Interested Sherburne taxpayers are welcome to attend the hearing via Zoom during which both written and oral statements will be accepted and taken into consideration. So the hearing is now open with the now with that announcement. And you want to kick it off, Wendy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would like for my board, the Board of Assessors is in attendance, and they would need to open their meeting. So we have Drew and Kathy, and I'm not sure if Ed is here.
I'll make a motion to in the meeting for the Board of Assessors.
All right, I'll second that.
All in favor.
Aye.
Yeah, I don't see Ed on the Zoom, so.
Okay.
Okay, you're in session now. So do you want to explain to us what we're doing and then we?
Yes, yes, I'm going to, I'm going to quickly read a paragraph of the purpose. It's it kind of is what you said, but I'll open it with that, and then we'll go into a brief discussion. So the purpose of the public classification hearing is for the select board to determine the allocation of local tax to be borne by the four classes of real property and class five personal property for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. In deciding the allocation, the select board must adopt a residential factor. Residential factors used to determine the percentage of the tax levy that is applied to each class of real and personal property. The Board of Assessors applies these percentages to individual property classes. And so what that means is you'll have to decide, and again, historically, as Paul Duransus mentioned, um, the town of Sherburne general, well, has always adopted a residential factor of one. Um, this year's tax rate has gone from eighteen oh one down to sixteen ninety-five. Um, and the average value is one million, one point one million. And there's been about eleven point six percent increase in overall value. So as I'm going through the presentation, there's a, you know, a few things that, a lot of things that factor in, but part of that is new growth, residential new growth, we had little over six million dollars. And commercial, industrial, and personal property, we had about six point two million dollars in new growth. So that totals two hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine in revenue for the town. Hopefully, we'll have about the same next year. Um, although the overall increases, overall increase of the town will be likely be less. The market's starting to plateau, but values are stable, so that's a good thing. Um, so because the budget and fiscal twenty-four increased by six percent, the average single family tax bill is increasing by eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. So although the rate went down, there's still an increase in the tax bill for this year. As there is in every community every year. So does anybody have any questions? You want me to kind of dive into things a little deeper, or do you want to get into reviewing? The factor.
I have two questions with hands raised. I'm going to maybe recognize those from the select board first. So Marion was the first first one to click in. So Marion?
Yeah. Yeah, this is a matter of definitions, Wendy. The new growth you define in this document as new construction and completion of of new construction. And personal property, I'm not sure exactly what that comprises, but just for all of our people listening in, if there are any uh, for our information, uh, where it, I don't see in your calculations where you calculate in the increase in value because of the rise in real estate prices.
You don't, oh, okay. So under let's see. So on a second page, under purpose, there's total assessed values. And you'll see F Y twenty-four values and next to it F Y twenty-three values. And you can see the difference between twenty-four and twenty-three.
So does that include new growth or is that?
That includes new growth.
So that's new growth plus increase in value. Is that correct?
No, the new growth is in the overall value. The overall assessed value.
Of the town.
Of the town, correct.
Right, but the individual properties increase in their value because of the hot real estate market. So that is that all sort of within the the residential bucket? I mean, I I don't see that broken down here at all. So I was just wondering.
Um, so we don't really break it down like that. Um, so about six million of growth is on residential properties, and about six million is on personal property. Personal, okay, go ahead.
So the six million in residential includes new growth and increase in in real estate values. Is that correct?
Um, I'm I'm trying to.
No, I think Marion, I think what you're asking, the the new growth is only essentially what has been added to the town, like physically added to the town.
Yeah.
Where, so new growth doesn't include increased property, existing property value. So so if you if you wanted to figure out that out, what you would do is take that fiscal year twenty twenty-four value, though, you know, one billion, six eighty-nine, et cetera, et cetera, and then you would simply take out the new growth numbers. So the the total being twelve, two fifty-nine, two thirty. So you would subtract that out of the 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 current total value. And then you calculate a percentage over fiscal twenty-three, and that would represent essentially the amount of property value increase, existing property value increase.
Yeah, that that makes that makes.
Thank you, Steve.
Just wanted to reassure myself that the the new growth and the increase in property values has are not broken out here. We don't see those two.
I apologize. Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And you had mentioned the personal property. You wanted to know a little bit about what that's comprised of. That's public utilities, businesses, machinery, things, things like that. So you, you know, N star, Algonquin gas lines, um, poles, wires, conduits.
Does auto excise tax come in that too, or no?
I'm sorry?
Auto auto real excise tax, does that fall into personal property also?
Um, no, no.
Because it's not real estate?
Right, it's so there's personal property tax, excise tax, and real estate tax.
Okay.
And then I have one other quick question, Wendy. Sorry to take time, but I think it's good that we understand this. Um, the the class two open space, is that a conservation land that is not taxed at all? It does not include open space land that is privately owned, such as, say, chapter sixty-one lands or uh, that sort of thing?
No, so we don't have, we don't, we do not have any two hundred class properties. We have not adopted open space. Therefore, there, there's no open space in town.
So it does, okay.
Technically, you know, in a in a technical D O R sense.
Well, there is open space, you just don't tax it.
So there's a definition, the D O R qualifies as something as as open space. We tax it within residential and commercial. On in in this class one hundreds and the class three hundred.
I'm not, I, I, yeah, the number system doesn't illuminate for us.
So we don't have class two hundred, which is open space.
Well, uh, okay, it's listed here, so you've got it, but you don't tax it.
Um, it's it's, yes, we have to list.
So within the residential is included protected open space that's privately owned.
Yes.
Okay. And that would include then chapter sixty-one property.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Kathy, did you want to, you just raised your hand. Do you want to add something to that?
I I just wanted to add that, can you hear me? Am I muted?
Perfect, perfectly.
Okay, um, I just wanted to add that typically communities don't classify open space because chapter sixty-one A accommodates any kind of discount that the town would want to split out of the residential. Because if you were to split it, it would come out of the residential. So, um, chapter sixty-one A, B, and and the rest of sixty-one accommodate for that, any discount that the town would want to apply. So and that's more of an incentive and protective for the community as well.
Thank you, Kathy. You said that much better than I.
I I only ask because it's on, you have class two is open spaces classified here, so. Confusing.
So are you all set, Marion?
Yep, I am.
All right. Now, Eric, you had your hand up and you took it down. Do you have a question?
And I am, I answered my own questions, but but some I I support a flat tax rate as in the past, so, you know, even the same, whatever, so I support that.
Okay. So is there anything else we need to discuss with regard to the values, Wendy?
No, no.
And so we talked about this. You're still waiting for some information from the state, so technically we would need to wait to hear from that, but we could, Paul has made a suggestion that you're aware of, that we could take the vote now and have a provisional approval of it. The other option, it seems like, given that some of us will be away, the other option, like you and I discussed, is we could just have a quorum of three could approve it at a later date. So why don't we discuss that? Paul, do you want to weigh in? You maybe explain your proposal, please?
Sure, right. My point is that the only issue is the the delivery of a P information was delayed until tomorrow morning, and that's a delivery problem. The information is already already in place. It's not going to change between tonight, tomorrow morning. And to have us come back for another meeting simply because of the the delay in the delivery of a document, uh, to me, it's like, uh, 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 not getting a bill in time that's that's, you know, due five days from now. I I could pay the bill without having it in my hand. And and I know many times, and I heard this statement that would G D O R has ways of doing things, and yes, indeed, they have ways of doing things. And when you cross examine them, if you find out that was something done long ago, they don't remember why they did it. And the people who did it don't aren't there anymore, but that's the way they've always done it, so they don't want to change it. So I I know the practice is, you 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 keep the hearing open until you actually have the delivery in hand. And that just seemed overly mechanical. So my suggestion was I'd like to make a motion to approve a a tax rate of one as we have for the last decades.
Ever.
Forever. That's a uniform rate for everybody. And to make it subject to the receipt of the the information that's expected tomorrow morning.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion as second, so let's let's have select board discussion first of that motion. Thank you, Paul.
I mean, I guess I would like to hear the opinion of the assessors as to yeah, what whether that is allowed or not. I mean, I just I don't want to put us into a position where we aren't actually in compliance because we tried to do a maneuver um, when all we needed to do was, I mean, it's a little bit cumbersome, I guess, but calling an emergency meeting at some point with just three of us present, and it can be on Zoom, right? So we just need to have three of us show up and officially vote it through. I I just I I I recognize Paul, um, your attempt to sidestep the bureaucracy of it, and I appreciate that. But I mean, I I would assume that you, in your, you know, sort of professional capacity, can appreciate that may maybe sometimes somebody might not look too kindly on that attempt to sidestep. So I I would like to hear what the assessors have to say.
You want to go first, Wendy? I see Kathy has her hand up also.
Sure, yes. Kathy, why don't you go ahead? And I I, the only thing I can say is is that in my opinion, the meeting needs to be continued um, until we have final in order to get the tax rates up. But Kathy, you can go ahead.
So so typically, you know, you can vote on the the split rate, the the unified rate, whether to do the, um, help me out, Wendy, the the three things that they they.
Yes.
And and those are decided, the only, the bottom line is, is that once the Department of Revenue runs their numbers, there's always an amount of money that the Board of Selectmen has to vote on, and that is the difference between the levy and the excess levy. So you you have to approve the excess levy, and so we won't have that number. But whether or not you can just approve that in gateway, I don't know if the selectmen have access to gateway to make that approval. Um, and and basically, that's just a penny rounding technique that they they have. Um, but they do get a little sticky if you don't approve it as a board.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Jackie, do you want to keep us on the straight and narrow here? Uh, yeah, there you go.
Okay, no, sorry. It's just that I have to certify this vote, so I just wanted to clarify that it sounds like I'm not going to be able to certify tomorrow. That's my question. Well, you wouldn't be able to certify until we have final, so.
Yeah, so it sounds like I can't certify tomorrow.
Right, so, um, we've done this once before, about eight years ago. Um, and we got recommendation from the Bureau of Accounts, and and we did need to set a date and a time and continue the hearing. Um, and I I spoke with a few assessors who have done it recently. Um, and they were, they also had to continue their hearing.
Well, Eric has his hand up, but a quick question. So our next official hearing is December seventh. It needs to be done before that, is what you're saying, though, right?
Yeah, I mean, I was originally offered when the date changed to do it on December seventh, and I just feel that puts undue pressure on the tax collector.
That's fine. No, that's understood. No, I understand.
You know, a lot of people are holding them on the seventh, but it's it's too tight, I think, for it's just, yeah.
Okay, so Eric, you want to weigh in?
What time is it? What time is this thing going to roll in tomorrow? He says it's going to come in tomorrow.
It's it's again, I was told it was going to come in tomorrow. Um, you know, Diane and I chatted about dates today, and what were the three dates I gave you, the Diane, the twenty?
The twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth of November.
Nineteenth, it can be in the morning, it can be in the evening. It's it's will be a five-minute Zoom meeting.
But within an hour notice, I'd be willing to meet Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week or whatever. You know what I'm trying to say? I mean, I just.
But she suggested the week, the week after next week is what she's suggesting. Yeah.
Right, but in order.
Than that, if 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 people wanted to, I'm not going anywhere. I don't have a life. It's all Zoom. It's easy. You just, you know, need three people to get on, hold a hearing, and then, or continue to continue the hearing, finish it, take public comment tonight, so you've completed the public comment portion of this, and you can even open it again. I don't know. I, okay, that's, I'll be willing to do it as soon as I can.
So I just, I just need to also add that in order to continue the hearing, you need to choose a date and a time to meet. Otherwise, we will have to start the process all over again. Um, so if the three members.
Better, it'd be better to do it early next week, as Eric suggested, because I'll actually be here. I'll be out of the country, uh, twenty-seventh through the December second.
The only challenge is going to be a whole forty-eight hour notice thing. That's going to be the only challenge. You might have to do it like, there was, it might be like Tuesday morning or something like that. It would be the soonest you could do it.
Do we have to?
Yeah, I could meet the, I could meet the forty-eight hours if you do Tuesday morning. The posting.
And I guess I have a class all day Tuesdays, and now you're getting more complicated. I Monday, Monday at seven thirty would be the forty-eight hours. No, I know you have to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Could I make a suggestion? Um, and I just want to, I I just need to say this. We're going on the assumption that we're going to get it tomorrow. If we don't, then you know, we might, we'll get it Monday, you know, so it's it's kind of that, I don't know if people can do Wednesday on more, feel more confident on, you know, to have it on Wednesday. We, as much as I would like for all five members to be there, we just need a quorum. If it doesn't work with everybody's schedule, and I I thought, I apologize because I thought that um, you guys were aware of all of this, so I apologize. I didn't know.
No, no, that's okay. No need to apologize. We're fine.
Okay.
Well, I could do Wednesday as long as it's quick and it's on Zoom.
Yeah.
I can also do Wednesday.
All right, and I can too. So why don't we just pick a time on Wednesday? Is that all right?
So what would that would be the twentieth? What's that day, Wednesday?
Wednesday is the twenty-second.
November twenty-second, so first thing of the morning.
Jackie has her hand up.
Jack has a hand up.
I have to be on this call as well, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I didn't think you needed to, but, okay, that's fine. Just I'm asking in order for me to. Are you available Wednesday? Yeah, I am. I just. Okay, great. I just want to confirm that, uh, since I'm certifying that the hearing took place, and I, am I not supposed to be on there witnessing it? That's all. Ah, okay, sure, yeah. That's all I'm asking.
It's fine with me. Go ahead, Eric. What'd you say?
Well, I mean, I run it. I was the one that tried to push it. Wednesday might be a little tight for me, but we'll see what time of day it is and when it is. Um, yeah, that's about it. But it sounds like you got three anyway.
Can we do it? Uh, what about ten A M. On Wednesday? Could, I could do ten A M. On Wednesday. Steven, can you do ten A M. On Wednesday?
Yeah, I'm basically free all day on Wednesday.
And Eric, could you ask your cat if you're free on ten A M. On Wednesday?
I think, you okay?
He said, okay, that's good. Paul and Marion, can you do that? We only need threes. We have three, but.
Yeah, I can do ten I M. On Wednesday.
Is that all right, Paul?
I should be able to do that.
All right, so we have a date certain of Wednesday, November twenty-second at ten A M. Via Zoom.
And Jeff, don't forget that you have a motion and a second on the table right now, unless they wanted to rescind their their motion and second.
Well, I don't have, you can tell me the rules, Paul, but I, we don't also can just leave the motion. We're just continuing the meeting, so we we could leave the motion out there. But we don't need the motion, it seems like, if we're waiting.
Yeah, that's fine. I can withdraw the motion. I was trying to save us from having
Yeah, okay.
Having to do it.
All right.
I do suggest that you collect public comment right now, because maybe people can't make it Wednesday.
Absolutely, public, and if Drew has anything he wants to add also, so, um, so what, well, we've now agreed, Wendy, that we'll do that on the date that we told you, so that'll be in the minutes.
Be a motion. Could I do that, a formal motion to?
Sure, sure.
To, after hearing public comment and concluding tonight's hearing, that we continue the hearing until November twenty-second at ten. November twenty-second at ten o'clock.
AM. I gotta keep a very close eye on you, Paul. All right, that's good.
Second Paul's motion.
All right. So uh before we vote, let's see if, I don't see any public comments. Is there any other uh comment from anyone on the Zoom call tonight? All right, hearing none. Uh, shall we take a vote on Paul's motion? Eric?
I.
Steven?
I.
Marion?
I.
Paul?
I.
And I am I as well. So does that cover us, Wendy?
Diane, will you set up that meeting?
Yes, I'll do it tomorrow morning.
Thanks.
I'll post it.
All right, so we have, uh, we're, I started and T's cross, Wendy, you're okay?
Uh, yes, and again, I, I appreciate you working around all of this.
Uh, it's not, not a big deal.
It's a little, bit of a confusing meeting, but um, but all's well that ends well. We're at sixteen ninety-five and I'm pretty happy with that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I wanted sixteen seventy-four.
I know, and we have Mary Moore.
Celebrate the three-hundred-and-fiftieth, but.
I know. Mary Moore would be happy to. She's not here yet, I don't think, but.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Thank you. And I wanted to quickly thank um my assistant, Amy Davidson, and the finance team, and my board, and uh Jeremy and Diane for helping us through this process.
Excellent. Now, do you want to just vote to uh uh close your meeting?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to close the assessors' meeting at this time.
All righty. All second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone.
You guys can meet in the phone booths, I think. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a wonderful holiday if we don't see one another. Thank you.
Take care.
Take care.
Heidi, you're up on the band.
I don't think they have phone booths anymore, Jeff.
I know, I know they don't.
Kind of showed your age there.
I did, I did. Heidi, you're muted, I think. I don't know you're not. So you're gonna uh discuss the Woodhaven uh ban? I don't, I'm not hearing you though. You're not muted, but your microphone's off.
Wait, now maybe.
Are you better?
Oh, yeah, now we're.
Yeah, that's better now. I don't know what, I don't know what it was. But yeah, you're up.
Uh, so I'm here for my final borrowing in front of you. Which, sorry to say, I, I can, I won't miss it too much. But we had a bid going out for a, our two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar bond anticipation note. This is a renewal. This is going to be running from December fifth to Au- August twenty-third, coinciding with our other current borrowings, bands that we have out there um so that we can go for a long-term obligation bond next year. And we, the winning bid was one local bank at four-point-four-three percent. We had two other bids at four-point-nine-nine and five-point-oh-four. So rates definitely have gone up. Um but I was happy at least to get the four-point-four-three. So I'd like a motion to award our bond anticipation note to one local bank for a net interest cost of four-point-four-three percent from December fifth through August third, twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
So moved.
Do we need the amount in the motion or no?
Two, yes, two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars.
Okay. Is there a second? All right, so any discussion? All right, we'll vote then. Eric?
I.
Steven?
I.
Marion?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thank you very much, Heidi. Excellent job.
Great, and I'll be seeing uh, I think Eric, Jeff, and Marion tomorrow for signing in the morning around eight-thirty, nine o'clock.
I can do that, yeah. I rep- my calendar. Can you do, you, you already cleared it with the, you can both make it too?
Yeah, but I put on my calendar at ten, so hold on. Okay.
This, well, this, I put eight-thirty, but Jackie, you have to be there to uh notarize it. So will you be there? What time will you be there?
I get there. I get to work, I get there at eight tomorrow.
All right, so, so.
How, how late are you there tomorrow, Jackie? Just so we know.
Well, Town Hall closes at noon, so I'll be, and I have an appointment in the afternoon, so I'll be leaving sometime around noon time.
How, how about you, Heidi? Could you give us, oh, you said eight-thirty to nine is, can the window of time be any bigger than that?
Um, I could go, I could stay to ten if, if you'd like, um if that works for you or.
I'll, I'll come at nine. I don't want to make that confusion. I just accidentally added my calendar. I can come whenever. I'm actually taking off, so.
I can get there by nine too.
All right, let's just do nine. We'll come, I'll make my nine then to.
That'd be awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Yep. Our next agenda item is the resignation of the town collector Pam Douse effective November twentieth, twenty-twenty-three. And um I don't think we need any discussion on this.
Well, just to thank her for her service.
Yes. Okay. And uh is there any other discussion? I don't, Pam, did you want to say anything? You don't have to say anything. You're welcome to if you want. And um do I, uh, do you have a motion to want to make the motion, Paul, too?
Which one?
We're, we're making the, I, we should do them separately. We're, we're, a motion to uh consider ex-
To accept the resignation of Pam Douse as town collector effective Monday, November twentieth, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, Eric?
I.
Steven?
I.
Marion?
I.
Paul?
With thanks for her service, yes.
Absolutely. Uh, and I am I as well. So that's five this year. And then we have a similar motion to um consider the appointment of the interim town pres- treasurer, also effective November twentieth, twenty-twenty-three for Pam Douse.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, did I forget? Did I miss it? Did um the previous treasurer officially resign? Do we officially have a, have to accept the resignation of the previous treasurer?
Um.
Or is this all automatic?
He's going to resign on Monday.
Just making sure, because we had to accept the resignation of the last one.
But she's not an elected official. Heidi's not an elected official. She's a an employee at Will like I am, so if I was to put in my resignation with the town administrator, I would do it the same way that Heidi would do it.
Just make sure there's no hiccups anywhere.
No, we've checked it out. We thought about that, actually.
Well, I would vote, I would vote no on Diane's uh resignation.
We would schedule it while you're in Europe. Don't worry. So um so um do we have a motion to uh consider the appointment? You make it already? Is there a second?
Yes.
All right, Eric?
I.
Steven?
All right.
Marion?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thank you, Pam. And then uh the, the fifth item on the agenda is uh Chief Galvin talking about grants. And I, I know, I think you mentioned another one today, but Diane told me you're going to hold off and do that subsequently.
Yeah, we have another one that we just found out we received yesterday, and we'll do that. We have some paperwork to complete to make it official, so. Um, but yeah, tonight it's uh, is actually four grants that total just over a hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. Um, the, uh, do you want to do them one at a time, or do you want me to present them all and then just one vote?
I think the latter, the one vote's good, yeah.
So the first is um, is the municipal road safety grant, and we've received this in previous years. Um, this year, it's in the amount of seventeen thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and sixty-three cents. Um, the majority of that is actually going to be used to pay overtime for traffic enforcement activities um for different mobilizations throughout the year. And then we're also purchasing two new handheld radar guns with that as well. Um, the second is a uh, is a federal grant from the Department of Justice um that's for supporting uh law enforcement agencies seeking accreditation. Um, from then, we received fifty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. Um, that will be used to offset costs uh for a consultant uh as well as some personnel costs on our, our, on our end, plus some equipment um that's needed as part of the accreditation process. Um, and then the last two, one is a, a federal uh body camera uh implementation grant, and the other is a state uh body camera grant. The uh federal grant is in the amount of forty-thousand dollars, and the s- the state grant in the amount of seventy-three, three-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We'd actually kind of had a placeholder on the capital plan for, for a hundred-thousand dollars for replacement of our, our body cameras. And now we've uh, we've got all that funding through uh, through a grant program, so. So totals, yeah, like I said, just over a hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars.
So can I make a motion?
This, this is your forte, Paul, definitely. You accept money well.
Yes, as fast as we can before anybody changes their mind. So uh, I move that we accept the four grants that were just presented to us by Chief Galvin and to authorize the expenditure of the funds and the accordance with such grants.
And I'll say I'm particularly, I'll second, but I'm also particularly impressed with um the fact that you're bumping something that's actually on the capital plan. So a lot of times we get grants and, you know, as long as we don't always know, is that nice to have, must-have and so on. When something actually replaces something on the capital program, which means it's, it's an actual savings to the community. Um, I think that's huge. I do, and thank you for that.
Yeah, and that's, you know, a hundred-ten-thousand dollars or more, so, yeah. Okay, so uh Eric?
I.
Steven?
I.
Marion?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank, thank you very much. And quickly, I just, I just needed to give some credit on this. Uh Sergeant Kelly Exo-Hopless came to me not quite a year ago, and it expressed interest in, in grants and, and what, looking at for what was out there. And we sent her to a couple of training programs. Um, and the, the three largest grants that were presented today, um she worked very hard on all of those with all the paperwork and, and the things it needed to go into it. And uh was the, really the reason for our success. So she needs a lot of credit for that.
That's excellent.
Excellent. Thank her for it.
Can I just ask, what, what was the additional grant that you are not presenting yet today?
Uh, so it's another grant in the, uh, just over forty-thousand dollars, uh, which is for the replacement of our tasers. Um, those have kind of reached end of life. I was trying to hold off on those for another year, um, not to have that and uh body cameras kind of hit at the same time for capital expenses. Um, so we, we didn't get everything we needed for that. Um, but we got kind of our start, and I think uh, Mike, I'll explain more next, next meeting when we accept that grant.
Great, thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. All right. Mary, you're, you're up. Are you uh gonna update us? Your, your camera's off. I think, there you are.
Um, so I am here.
Did you, did you hear the starting uh with our tax rate, our new tax rate?
Oh, no. Is this depressing?
No, our, well, our new tax rate is sixteen dollars and ninety-five cents. But Wendy was working hard to make it be instead sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents to be exactly three-hundred-and-fifty years ago.
Oh, that's awesome. Yeah, I love it.
We didn't succeed in doing that, so, anyway.
Very clever. Um, so I need, just need a few minutes. I just wanted to provide an update on some of the stuff that we've been doing with the three-fiftieth. And I'm stepping away from a little birthday celebration for my mother-in-law who's eighty-nine today. And we have some surf and turf for her here at Forty-Nine Farm Road, which has been fun, but um, let me share my screen if that's okay.
Sure.
Happy birthday to her.
I know, it's pretty, pretty amazing, right? Um, all right, so here's the update. Um, you know, the three-fiftieth planning celebration has um been wonderful. We've got a really great steering committee. Um Heidi and Abby and I are co-chairing it, and it's been, you know, really, we've made some great progress. So I would first give thanks and um kudos to the steering committee. Um, we've got the logo, the website, the newsletter. Um, DPW posted or um hung some wonderful banners earlier this week in town centers, so we're happy about that. Um, I'd encourage everybody to look at sherburnethree fifty dot org to um figure out how to get involved, to volunteer. We have merchandise on order for next year. Um, we had a really nice welcoming table, I think, at the town meeting on ten-seventeen. The calendar of events is growing. Um, people are raising their hands, trying to get involved. So I think it's, it's achieving a lot of the goals that we set out to achieve at this time last year, which is great. Um, you may have seen some of the Sherburne Rocks um filming around town. That's a, a Sherburne Film Musical that's gonna hit the um red carpet next uh spring, and that'll be terrific. And then we're gearing up for this wonderful um culmination event on ten-five-twenty-four, which should be the three-fiftieth parade that Zach Ward is helping with, and a Sherbstock concert, which is going to be over on Jamison. That'll be a family fun event for um, for everybody. And, you know, like I said, it's really, I feel like we're achieving a lot of community engagement and pride, and people are very willingly signing up, adding their names to distribution lists, so it's all been good. Um, just really quickly, a PSA on um some upcoming events. December sixteenth, we have a um uh sort of gift fair over at the library. So a lot of local groups are going to be participating, selling some of their swag. I know Steven Si, you mentioned that you were interested in some of the merch, so um be sure to put this on your calendar. Um, and then we have a really fun day to kick off the new year, where we have some first-day hikes, um some tours over at Unity Farm, followed by fire pits and festivity outside the Sherburne Community Center. And um Jim Burns and the Community Center um Foundation has been really good about helping with that. So we're excited about the, the initial events, but the thing I'm looking for your support on tonight is an event that Heidi has actually um been spearheading. And it's kind of in the model of the Water Fire in Providence. Um, and we're looking at sort of creating a water and fire event over at Farm Pond. And the idea is to have um, you know, a, a sort of fun, you know, family-filled event over at um Farm Pond where it would be an evening event. We'd have luminarya with, you know, up the pathway to the um top of the hill and then down. And then we have these sort of, you can see these sort of screenshotted in fire pits um twelve feet from the shore. There'll be jugglers, music, revelry, and then we'll do some dessert in the parking lot. And it would be kind of a pathway that people could take um around the event. Um, you know, really to enjoy Farm Pond, but just make it sort of a different and memorable way to experience, you know, this wonderful asset that we all enjoy. And um Heidi has already met with the Farm Pond Advisory Committee. They are um supportive of it. We also think it could be a great way to promote some of the pond ecology, um the protections that we're all seeking to preserve and, you know, keep, keep Farm Pond clean. Um, we would, you know, certainly promote that on the website. Um, we could involve the students um at Pine Hill perhaps with, you know, getting these luminarya bags decorated either as a year-end activity or some sort of a summer reading activity at the library. Um, they would be tea lights. They, we know, battery-operated. They wouldn't be actual fire in the bag, so I don't think we have to worry about um, you know, any danger there. And Heidi has reviewed this with both the Fire Department and DPW, and they're all on board. Um, and really what we're looking for from you tonight is that, you know, you would um also support this, you know, pending um, you know, any clarification you need from us tonight on this.
So I would move to approve.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we need to approve, but sure, that sounds fine.
Heidi, is there anything else you wanted to add? I know you've, you've really spearheaded this one.
No, I think um Farm Pond Advisory just wanted to have the Select Board's support um on this to make sure they were on board with us using Farm Pond.
Yep.
Okay, so Paul made the motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, Eric?
I.
Steven?
I.
Marion?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. And I wanted to tell you I announced your new banners at my Veterans Day talks.
Oh, good, yay.
So I got the word, because, because, because I saw Sean in the cherry picker in the afternoon before.
Yeah.
The beautiful dark green and really nice design. They really stand out.
Abby Fisk gets the credit for those. She did a great job and found a vendor who did a quick turnaround on it, and um it was within the budget, so we're very excited about that.
They went up on the day before Veterans Day, so we got the word out.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thanks for the update, Mary. Go back to your party.
Okay.
All right. Uh, any revisions to the consent agenda? Or do I have a motion? All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Eric?
I.
Steven?
I.
Marion?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. So we only have uh no town administrators. I mentioned earlier, uh Jeremy's at a soccer banquet. I don't know uh if there are any select board reports that you want to make tonight.
Any question?
We, we gotta go after eight PM. You know, you guys are pushing me to end before eight PM.
Can I ask a quick question on the consent agenda?
Yes.
It has a bunch of meetings, but it doesn't have one. Is, do we have to actually make an amendment for that? We fine by discontinuing the hearing? I'm probably splitting hairs here, aren't I?
Uh, well, and also if you uh, if you want to, if we do want to reconsider it, the twenty-eighth, I don't think we're going to need to meet on the twenty-eighth either. But we can leave it on the schedule and, and decide to cancel it.
I'm probably just splitting hairs, to be honest with you, because we clearly stated in the open hearing that we're going to meet on Wednesday, whatever the date is. But we just approved the thing, which didn't include it, that's all.
This on, you want me to put it onto the agenda? Is that what you're looking for me to do?
No.
You could put it in a minute. You could put it in the minutes.
Agenda is a list of future meetings.
Yeah.
Right.
We just approved that the future list of future meetings doesn't include this one on Wednesday.
But you can listen to the minutes. It's not on the agenda, but you can just list it in the minutes.
Okay, that's.
Because we already approved, we already voted on it. Okay.
Yeah, one one last minor, really minor thing on the draft minutes. Uh, the draft minutes for September seventh. That you sent around, uh Diane. Uh, it says September seventh here, which was correct. That's when it happened. Uh, the you sent around says September ninth.
Yep, that's I'll fix that, Marion. Thank you.
Okay, that's it.
So I'll do a report.
Excellent, Paul.
So I just wanted to um. Celebrate a little bit the Veterans Day event that the. Town held on on Veterans Day. We had um. Marion, we had Jeff. We had Eric. All give good speeches. We had an excellent speaker that talked about. How the military is not just about fighting wars, but also saving lives. And we had a chorus from Pine Hill. And many veterans in in attendance, and I think everybody had a pretty good time. So I wanted to thank the organizers of that, which primarily was uh Diane Moore's.
Thank you. And Diane Hook, the veterans agent, was was very instrumental in that, too.
I would also the the highlight of the speakers, though, you didn't mention. The two student speakers were phenomenal. The Pine Hill and and high school speakers were.
Excellent, excellent speakers.
Phenomenal job.
Yeah, I think it was. It was kind of a shame that there weren't more residents here just to hear. Uh, and uh, you know, it occurs to me at at uh events like that with with Eric Lombardini, our new resident who was honored that day. That we have some amazing people hidden in the woods around in Sherburne. And often it's it's hard to discover them unless you go to things like that. So it was a real, real pleasure.
Absolutely.
He was a wonderful speaker.
Yep. All right. So are there any other select board reports? All right, the do you have any town administrator?
I just will probably want to say that the first week of December, we've started meeting with the budget makers. So uh Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I've booked us pretty much from nine o'clock in the morning until four o'clock in the afternoon with the various town budget makers. So they're going to meet with. Jeremy, Deb Suffering, and myself, review the budgets before they go to advisory.
Are they initially doing just the capital ones? Because technically their operating budgets aren't due till the end of December, right?
Right, but we're going to review them with them first.
So you're doing both capital and operating?
The capital budgets need to be into Jeremy, I think. By the twenty fourth of November.
Okay, so have they been reviewed or will that just?
Not yet, no. We haven't received anything yet.
Okay.
But we're moving full force ahead with budgets.
Good. That's excellent, and you can tell them, you know, what we decided uh for the budget for police department salary.
I will do that. I will. I will speak to him about that.
All right. Well. Does anyone want to move that we adjourn at seven fifty one? Seven fifty one? Holy cow.
Wow.
Thursday night football's not even on yet, you guys. I don't know what I'm gonna do. Thank you, everyone. And and we'll see those of you uh on the uh Wednesday at ten AM for a very brief meeting to to vote on the.
You should you should run the motion.
So I second.
Yeah, okay, so uh Eric? We're adjourning. Steven?
I.
Marion?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
With a special commendation for Jeff, please. Redo these meetings that end at seven something in the future.
See what I can do.
We will. We will celebrate.
Good night.
All right, good night, everyone.